Good evening, this is John Moore.
Councilman, this is the chief, I can hear you.
Thank you. I hope we can handle all those attendees.
Okay, well, since it's six o'clock and it looks like all of the council members are checked in and as well as staff, like to call to order this special meeting of the city council, the city of Cattati on Thursday, May 14th, 2020. This will be a budget study session. So we will open it up to public comment, although it looks like at least on my screen, there are no members of the public. Is that correct, Lauren?
That is correct, Mayor Skolman.
Okay. And if anybody does join us, we'll be pausing as well in between parts of the presentation. So there'll be further times while I will check in and see if there's public comment. And with that, we'll open up the budget study session for the general funds, special revenues and capital projects funds for fiscal year 2020, 2021.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is Damian, the city manager. And I apologize, did we do roll call? Did I miss it?
We did not, I jumped right past roll call, it wasn't on the list. It was just called to order, so let's do a quick roll call and make sure all of the council members are present. If you could go ahead with that, Lauren, thank you.
Sure, council member Delafell.
Here.
Council member Harvey.
Here.
Council member Lehman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Here.
Mayor Skolman.
Here, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So as the mayor announced, tonight is a budget study session on the general funds, special revenue funds and the capital project fund. Tonight, presenting will be Angela Porter, our administrative services director, and also we have with us tonight Ken Nordhoff with HDL. He's a municipal tax expert that will also be a part of the presentation and be available for questions. And before we lead off with Angela's presentation, I just wanted to basically, I want to lead off by saying that we're still early in the understanding of the actual impacts of COVID, or COVID, sorry. We've taken a very conservative approach with revenue forecasts. And on the flip side, we're also assuming conservative operational expenses to make sure that we've budgeted very conservatively. But it's going to be, as we go through the summer and the early part of next fiscal year in particular, we're going to be looking at, you know, looking at revenue actuals month to month. And fortunately, as you'll see, and as you've probably already seen by looking at the materials, due to the council policies and the longstanding priority on being fiscally conservative, we're projecting to end the current year with reserves that are around 93%. Ending fiscal year 2021 with 79%. But, you know, given the continued uncertainties that Cattati and not really all cities and counties face, and all businesses for that matter face, this is based on a strategy of protecting regular, protecting essential services and regularly reviewing our revenue actuals and discussing adjustments to the budget as we go. And, you know, for example, just as a quick example, if we, if our trajectory follows our forecasts, then as we go through the year, we'll be discussing phasing of capital projects or amounts to essentially turning on a project as we go into the year if the forecasts look like that would be advisable at that time. So anyway, that's a quick recap, I don't mean to steal Angela's thunder, sorry about that Angela, but that was all I had right now. So with that, Angela will kick off the presentation, thank you.
Thank you Damian, you didn't steal any thunder, promise. Anything I could do to stop talking is a good thing tonight. Okay, so thank you, good evening, Mayor, council members, all city staff and community participants in the future, if you're watching this in the future. Tonight, we're holding a budget study session to go over the city's general funds, special revenue funds and capital projects. So just briefly for those who might be watching again in the future or attending, briefly, a budget study session is, this was one of our two budget study sessions where city manager and city staff provide really three things. First, we show the status of the budget for the current year, which is from July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020. Secondly, we share what is known, planned or estimated regarding the upcoming year, which would be from July 1, 2020 to June 30th, 2021. And third, this really gives the city council and the community the opportunity to respond to this presentation and provide further direction to city staff on the items as to be included in our proposed budget. Due to these very different times, we're also going to continue to delve a little bit deeper or report back to council on some assumptions that were necessary for building out a responsible city budget with really sound revenue estimates. Unlike Damian iterated earlier, these again are just estimates and things are very fluid. With that, I do want to introduce our fellow panelists, Ken Nordhoff, who is a principal for HDL Companies. Ken's worked across many different levels in government over the last almost 40 years. Ken, I know, I calculated it, I looked at it, it was almost 40 years, sorry. He's worked as an outside financial auditor, then as an administrative services director himself, as well as served as city managers for both the city of San Rafael from 2005 to 2010, and then in Walnut Creek from 2010 to 2016. In 2017, he joined HDL to help support over 300 California cities and counties by evaluating the increased tax revenues, providing critical budget management information, offering really specialized expertise to these clients for economic development opportunities. For the city of Cattati, he's one of the principals who meet with us at least quarterly in order to help us analyze our sales tax and transaction tax data. As Damian mentioned, Ken's going to be jumping in on our discussion here to help supplement our ideals on what's going to be happening with our sales tax and our revenue streams for the next fiscal year. So as I mentioned earlier, this is a budget study session, so there's no action to be provided by council at this time. This is more of a presentation of the inflows and outflows of the resources for the city funds and how we plan to continue to meet the strategic objectives and goals set forth during the strategic planning sessions. During the session, we'll first go over the schedule for the budget process, next we'll go over the strategic objectives, and then we'll go over our forecasting and the assumptions we built into our budget. Lastly, actually finally get to the budget for the general fund, capital projects, special revenues, and leave with a conclusion and get some feedback. So way back in February 12th, we presented to council the mid-year budget for the fiscal year 1920. At that time, the most significant event that had happened in the city was a PG&E power shut-off. And even with that PG&E power shut-off, we were still estimating that sales tax revenue was anticipated to exceed the original budget by more than $240,000. Now, it's a long time ago. But as things change, fast forward two months to April 9th, and we hosted our first virtual meeting, or one of our first virtual meetings with our city's strategic planning session. During the session, not only did we discuss our city goals and objectives, but we got an opportunity to provide an in-depth discussion about the financial health of the general funds, as well as provide some economic scenarios based on what happened in our last 10 years of the city's history, as well as what possible impacts there could be based on different economic trajectories of the V-shaped recovery, large B, small B, and what that meant for our city. So after that meeting, we had in April 21st, we had our first budget study session where we covered the enterprise funds, which include the water, water capital, sewer, sewer capital and the internal service funds. Key topics from that meeting were that we were going to continue to imply conservative methods for accounting of revenues related to the timing for developments for the water usage and other fees, and that we'll continue to meet and exceed the required reserves. And consistent with that, we're going to continue to express that same regard with our general fund. We'll continue to closely monitor the operating expenses and revenues and adjust as appropriate for any non-essential infrastructure maintenance and upgrades. So fast forward, now we're at March 14th meeting, and we're going to cover quite a bit of data still. And then once we have comments back from this session, next month in June, we'll bring back a comprehensive budget book for adoption by the city council. Again, a refresher on that April 9th meeting, we presented the goals and the focus for the city. And those are going to continue to be our focus even with the times as they are. We're going to continue to focus on our community by including personalized and expanded public communication for events and projects. We're going to continue to focus on infrastructure that's strategic in nature with roads, parks and city's buildings. For economic development, we're going to continue to focus on existing opportunities, evaluating key market changes and adapting businesses to this new reality and identify and remove barriers for key business development sites. So, sorry to break it to you, but these really are uncertain times. And budgeting at the best times is often a very difficult puzzle to put together. And it's always easier to be conservative and assume less revenues when the global, regional, local economies are stable and not this volatile as we're seeing now. So interestingly enough, in an article from the National Bureau of Economic Research, they identified that no previous infectious disease outbreak, including the Spanish flu, which killed an estimated 2% of the world's population, has impacted the stock market as powerfully as COVID-19's pandemic. So also in a quote from Gavin Newsom just today about the budget presentation, he said that COVID-19 has caused California and economies around the country to confront a steep and unprecedented economic crisis. Facing massive job losses and revenue shortfalls, he continued that difficult decisions lie ahead. With shared sacrifice and resilient spirit in California, they're confident they will emerge stronger than this crisis ever before. So Cattati really is no different. We had to prepare this draft of budget based on the best available information we have today. We do really have, we don't have a buzzword that's going to tell us what's going to happen and what this recovery is going to look like. And we rely on a lot of experts in the industry, insert Ken, and seek out research on our own, so we have lots of meetings, GFOA, CSMFO, League of California Cities. And we try and gain other additional understanding as to what's happening to our neighbors and take their research and apply it to where we think we are and how we can continue moving forward. What we know is that everything is fluid and that there are more things expected to impact our budget based on legislative impacts in the future. And from that legislature impacts, from the shelter in place is laid out by the county health officials. So we are unsure as to when this is going to end. We don't have control over that. So with that uncertainty, we have to make certain assumptions. Our assumptions that we've built into this is that our local recovery is going to be still based on that V-shaped recovery, but probably with that longer tail end, as we discussed before. So this is really, Ken and I could have discussed it as a Nike swoosh symbol. And then just to reiterate that we really do with this recovery shape, still want to keep our estimates as conservative as possible. And so for revenues, that means bringing them in at the lowest amount that we assume we could receive. And again, with expenses, that's going to mean including all possible expenses or things that are probably possible that could happen. We also had to prepare this budget assuming that the shelter in place is going to be lifted eventually. And so we're hoping and thinking that this is going to be lifted in June. But again, that is subject to the county health official and what levels, different levels of that opening means to our resources and our cash inflows are unknown. So with that, I think it might be best to, Ken, is there anything that I, oh.
Angela, Angela, I would just suggest we talk about our revenue mix and if Ken's going to pick that up or if you are, I think it's a good topic.
Right, that's where I was going to jump into really, so this is what's happening around us, this is what's happening with our neighbors. This is what we're getting to for our revenues in order to build those assumptions. And our assumptions really are that Cattati is different. We do have a little bit of a different revenue-based structure than our other neighbors. We have a relatively secure industry base for our sales tax. And a lot of the sales tax losses that we are seeing are going to be partially offset by increases in the online sales tax and the way they're fighting. So just because we're different doesn't mean we're better because we do not have that offset of that TOT tax, which other cities are, in our neighboring areas are reliant on. And that's just not something that we have had the ability to be reliant on because we don't have it. Ken, did you have anything more to add right now as to why Cattati is a little bit different?
Yes, if I could, Angela, good evening, city council, this is Ken Nordhoff with HDL Companies. Thank you for having me here on your session this evening. And I'm glad to take any questions along the way that you might have. I think what I might just do to embellish what you said, Angela, is to identify or make everybody aware that's on the on the meeting that when we look at overall trends and understand what's happening on a statewide level or a regional level, we do spend considerable time trying to develop budgets that are specific to each community and each retail base. Cattati is a little bit different particularly than what we see like across Sonoma County, where you have a little higher concentration of businesses in the building and construction category. You actually have eight categories that we developed to put all the retailers in. And the same would be true in food and drug because you, in the last couple of years or so, have added cannabis business and some other things that have helped boost and stabilize your revenue base. And so what's a little unique about Cattati, aside from hospitality and tourism that Angela mentioned that isn't really prevalent in terms of hotel tax, you've also got some businesses that have been able to stay open more so than we see in other places, at least in terms of as a proportion of your tax base. So, and I'll be glad, I don't want to make a lot of comments, so I'd rather just wait. And I can comment later when we get into some of the specific numbers. And as I said, be glad to answer any questions.
Perfect, thank you, Ken, that was a perfect point that needed to be said is that we do have a better mix of businesses that have been deemed essential and have continued operations during this emergency event. So I just briefly want to touch back on the scenarios that we developed in early April and the historical foundation for those scenarios. So I'm sorry if the legend didn't get onto the slide, but this graph depicts the last 10 years of the general fund revenues by fiscal year, and that's in the blue. And the overlay in orange is the percentage change in those total revenues. So you can see when something happens, even on a global scale like a recession or 9/11, our city revenues compress and shrink dramatically. So the citizens helped kind of mitigate the significant changes and fluctuations in our revenues with the approval of Cattati's Measure G, 1% transaction sales tax. With these additional taxes, we've made significant improvements in our revenue base, thus allowing us better leverage in revenue to obtain things like our matching grant funding, which support community services and our streets, Thank You Program, recreation, and create plans to address the deferred capital maintenance of our roads and buildings. So what does that do for our future? So here again with those scenarios that we were dealing with back in April, so what does this look like to our general fund revenues if we have that small V or that Nike swoosh type of recovery? So if we look at that, if we estimated, you know, if we have a 15% decrease in sales tax and transaction tax for fiscal year 2020, then the recovery over the next four years, we would see a total loss in revenues of around $3 million over those next four years. And then it would start to trend back up, but unfortunately, at the same timeframe coincides with the expiration of our Measure G transaction sales tax, which could make this scenario really dire for the city as revenues really never really get a chance to recover. With this and without the creation of other revenue sources or more long-term decisions about our services and projects, we would have to make those significant changes to those expenditures before 2022 in order to recover from that type of scenario. We're currently not looking at anything near that 15%. Again, these are those type of planning tools, things we were doing beforehand to just make sure that we were keeping an eye on what this future could hold for us. And we still don't right now. So alternatively, another scenario we ran was a large V. And this is one where we had a 25% decline in sales tax and the transaction tax for the next two years. And then, and we never, looking at this graph, we never really recovered from this decline due to that loss of Measure G funds. Thankfully, the city does not appear anywhere near this type of scenario currently. And this again, as Ken iterated, was due to the industries that support our local sales tax and our mixture of that. But we still need to keep an eye on what fluctuations and changes could be happening around us and what is going to come down the pike so that we can plan accordingly and fit both our strategic objectives to allow for these possible other outlined future operational changes. So with the city budget, there's always a task of making sure that we, as custodians of funds for our citizens, are using these insider resources for the services that the citizens want and need. But we also have to balance how to maintain that cost while providing a good quality service in a reasonable timeframe. Our first plan to address this balance in the next fiscal year is to first continue with our expenditure estimates being very conservative. So just like with the revenue estimates being conservative and keeping them lower, we're also going to keep our expenditure estimates conservative by keeping them higher, or at least reasonable for any possible payouts or additional increases in liability that may be incurred. And this is making sure that we have an all-inclusive cost evaluation. Secondly, we're proposing the temporary postponement of non-essential projects or contracts. We'll go into a little bit further as we go down the expenditures. Next, we'll make sure that the city is staffed appropriately in order to meet the essential services for our community. So when we're budgeting, we are going to include the assumption that all staff positions are filled all year. Currently, I believe there's only two unstaffed positions in the city outside of our seasonal staffing that we do through our rec program. But when there are any future staffing positions are vacated or become available, we will evaluate that the city, what the city's need is at that time. Next, we'll continue to finance our internal service funds for vehicle replacement and compensated absences. For the fiscal year 1920, we are only transferring funding as was needed to cover those distributions. However, we're going to continue to budget for the fiscal year 2021 to transfer all the additional funding needed in order to maintain sufficient funding for the service funds and continuing the replacement of aged equipment as needed for reimbursed compensated absences for our liabilities. Lastly, we will strive to minimize impacts to the general fund balances as this fund balance is really what has allowed our city to continue to thrive, even with the dire scenarios that were outlined previously. So again, as previously presented and updated for you now, here's the 10-year history of the city for our fund balance. The legend again is excluded, but the blue line is the city's general fund ending fund balance and the gray bar is the percentage change in the city's fund balance. So since 2010, the city has made significant improvements in retaining a specific balance of general fund revenues, which is in line with the GFOA guidance. This allows the city the ability to continue servicing our community even when or if we have a significant financial downturn. With the fund balance at 93% of operating expenses as projected for fiscal year 2019, 2020, we could continue operations without capital projects for almost a full year. And for our budget year 2020, 2021, we are anticipating dipping into some of that fund balance to continue some of those needed capital projects. But even with those used funds, we are still using over a quarter of a million dollars for that fund balance. We're going to retain 79% of our operating expenses in fund balance, which far exceeds our required 25%. So with that, what are some of our other general fund budget highlights? As mentioned just in the previous slide, the operating reserve is expected to meet and exceed both the fiscal year 2019, 20 and the 2020, 21 required 25% reserve. We are expecting a decrease in revenues from the 2019, 2020 adopted budget. So we adopted a budget this time last year and our revenues are decreased. That 59% decrease in the 2019, 2020 budget is approximately due to $475,000 That 59% decrease in the 2019, 2020 budget is approximately due to 7, $475,000 loss of sales tax revenues alone. And additionally, a loss of the 3.8% in revenues for fiscal year 2020, 2021 is approximately $300,000 in lost sales tax revenues. This is compared to the 2019, 2020 adopted budget that was adopted last year. Although we're projecting to have fund balance to cover capital projects, the physically prudent thing to do was to identify each project, and it goes through when they should be completed, and if it was needed during this fiscal year. After performing this analysis, we decided to propose the deferral of approximately $2 million in capital projects. We will continue to evaluate the budget revenues and report back to council when we may be able to bring back these projects based on the receipt of revenues at that time. For our operating costs, where we budgeted for all pre-negotiated adjustments, including those with our MOUs as well as contractors, we're going to continue to make that lump sum payment to CalPERS, which allows us to save thousands of dollars in budget funds every year. Additionally, one of the largest increases to our operational costs this year, and you'll see throughout when we continue the discussion, was due to the rising cost of insurance, both our city insurance, which is the general liability, workers' comp, auto, et cetera, as well as the health and benefits insurance that's provided to our staff. Lastly, as mentioned above, we have proposed a budget that will continue to fund the internal service funds for vehicle replacement and internal service funds. So before we jump right into the general funds and general fund revenues, I've wanted to take a brief pause and then open it back up to the council and the community for questions about our estimates, budget projections, what's happening in these times of uncertainty.
Okay, thank you, Angela. We've got a couple hands up. Councilmember DeLasso, you were first, first in line. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Angela, thanks for the information so far. So with respect to the capital projects, can I assume that, you know, whatever they are, while we saw the lists and the details of the budget, but with some of these, can we assume that they will be specked out, bid, and contractors before they bid would know that there is a possibility that this project may or may not happen in this current fiscal year, and that we wouldn't really take any movement on them unless we knew the money would be in there? So there's going to be clearly a significant amount of work outside of the general budgeting that you would be doing to kind of keep track of, you know, where are our revenues? Because it's about a two-month lag time for sales tax, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes, it is a three-month almost. We just received our, are waiting to receive our March payment in May. So, yeah, two months that we.
Okay, but with the capital projects, though, if we're, if we're specing out the projects and we're putting them out for bid, knowing should the money be there at some point in the fiscal year, we would be able to move on it i- if, you know, the scenario is more positive. I'm just trying to, trying to get a feel for that in general.
And I can, I can actually jump in a little bit, too. I think with regard to the capital projects, we have several projects that are getting to the end of the design cycle right now, so they're about ready to go out to bid this summer. And, you know, this summer, we're going to know a lot more about how our revenue actuals are actually matching up to our projections, and I think we've got a much better position to know if we're on the right trajectory or if we're on a different trajectory than we had assumed. And the idea is, sort of conceptually, the idea is, you know, we've, through, you know, these council policies and, you know, sort of the fiscal priority that the council's placed on the reserves because of, you know, the need to have essentially a rainy day fund. You have this, you have a, you know, we have a significant rainy day fund. As Angela said, it's, you know, 90, estimated to be 93% of operating costs at the end of this fiscal year, and that, and she said that that would take us through most of next year, and that's, and that assumption means that, like, we have $0 coming in for revenue, and it still gets us through most of it. But anyway, you know, when you have a rainy day fund, if you have to start using it because your projections are different, then that's exactly when you don't want to go buy a new car, right? You want to make sure you protect your essential services. And, and so, that's a long way to answer. As we move into the summer, we're still moving forward with all our capital projects as if we're going to build them. And, and we just, when we get to the summer, we'll have to decide if we're going to actually pull the trigger on awarding the construction contracts. I think in some cases, we will bid them out also to see what kind of prices we get, and, and make a decision based on the prices that we get on the bids, and also where we're sitting revenue-wise, actuals versus projection, and then make a call for the reward.
And it seems that knowing that certainly all the cities in Sonoma County are in a similar scenario, and in some cases, that could potentially lead to, you know, bid prices that might be even more favorable to us than they might normally be, or at least even just the availability of contractors. So, thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, there's, there's at least several cities that are actually kind of, as was talked about earlier, they're more heavily invested in the tourism economy, and so that's basically one to zero for a bit in terms of revenue, and they're actually looking at a much darker picture in terms of actually layoffs and so forth, furloughs, that sort of thing. And I don't think they're going to be, at least in the short term, doing a lot of capital out of the general fund.
Right, right. All right, thank you both, I appreciate that.
Okay, Councilmember Lamont, you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. In general, I think this is very prudent, and I support the tiered temporary deferrals of projects until we have a better focus on exactly what's happening. I think that makes a lot of sense. What I specifically wanted to ask about this portion of the presentation was how we came to our estimate and what sort of decline in revenues we might see. Specifically, as I understand it, we're looking at a steeper decline this year, and we're believing we might see a smaller additional one next year, something like 5.9%, followed by 3.8. So this would be the small V, I guess, and we're expecting that to be most likely? And I wonder if you could just give me a little more on why we think that's most likely? Because just my general expectation is I could see 21, 22, maybe if we're lucky, being a little easier. I could very easily seeing it be just as rough. So if you could speak to that. I know you mentioned our business decline played into that a little bit, but is there anything else that you or Mr. Nordoff could add to that? I'd be interested in hearing it. Thank you.
So I think that might actually be, if we don't have any other questions, are there any?
Yeah, no, I was just going to double-check about opening it up for public comment, but I'm still not seeing any attendees. Wanted to double-check with Lauren real quick. Is that still the case? That is correct. Okay, thank you. Yeah, so go ahead, Angela.
So Councilmember Lamont, if you don't mind, so that's really the next part of the presentation, and I'm building out those assumptions specifically for the general fund revenue, and what laid out those expectations for that decline. And so I can bring Ken in when we get to that sales tax piece of that, and why we're estimating the revenue decline in 1920 to be more significant versus 2021 being less so. And really, it is a matter of cash flow and timing of assumptions.
Very good. That would be perfect, and I think we've, I've given you the perfect segue, so with that, I'll let you go forward.
You did. Thank you so much. So just for the public who might be watching this in the future, what is the general fund? Why do we care about it so much? So the general fund is the primary fund that your government, the city of Cattati as an entity, uses for operations. This is where we record the use of all inflows and outflows that are not restricted for a specific special purpose. The activities that are paid through to this general fund constitute the core administrative and operational tasks of the government, as well as a significant portion towards those infrastructure projects like streets, routes, safety. But the key core services are police, public works, recreation, the community development, city management, and administrative services. So our inflows and outflows, just as Councilmember Lamont, or, yeah, Lamont mentioned, might seem a bit odd, why are we expecting the revenues in 2021 to increase compared to our estimates for 1920? So in packet pages 43 to 47, you can really see the detail of the city's revenues by type. For the, for the city as a whole, we anticipate an increase of city revenues of approximately 2% over the estimated balance for 1920. However, when you compare where we thought we were going to be in 1920, we actually have a loss of 4% of revenues. A big pieces is due to the cash projections for sales tax, where we were anticipating the sales tax in 1920 compared to where we know or estimating we're going to be for 1920, we're going to have a loss of around $600,000 less than what was budgeted. With that, approximately $200,000 of that is due to a tax deferral program ran by the state. And Ken can speak a little bit more to that in just a moment when we get into the nitty-gritty of the sales tax. However, with that sales tax deferral program, it's really a loss of cash revenue in 1920, and we're estimating we're going to hopefully recoup at least 50% of those taxes, but we're not going to recoup them until 20 and 21. So even though 2021, the actual core sales tax is still going to be a decrease, we're going to recoup some sales tax losses from 1920 in 2021. So to date, we've only received the sales tax through February. By the end of this month, we will receive March, so we'll have a more truer picture of how this COVID-19 emergency is affecting our sales tax participants and those who are paying those taxes, and we'll continue to monitor those as we go forward. Some significant other changes in our revenue inflows are related to other agencies, and again, this is another cash effect, where the change in the other agencies is primarily related to SSU's safety contract, which they prepaid their contract in 1819. So you'll see the actual sales tax, or the actual receipts for that, for revenues and inflows, is significantly higher in 1819. So we've got that cash upfront in advance, so that means we're expecting to actually, in cash terms, receive less in 1920, and then go back again to normal in 2021. So here's another picture of those comparative inflows, where you're seeing it by those revenue types side by side. So that's that increase in sales tax, the increase in other agencies, and it really is due to a decrease in 1920 estimated actuals that those changes are happening. So I really like this graph because it shows how we as a city are a little bit different than our community, our neighbors. We don't have that chunk of, you know, 25% or so TOT, and then even our sales tax. It represents approximately 50% of our revenues, and of that 50% of the revenues, 50% of that is derived from the Measure G transaction sales tax. And underlying all of that is really the basis of about 23% of revenues that's provided by property taxes. This again shows the importance of our focus, or continued focus, on economic development in order to identify key market changes and adapt to our businesses in this new reality so we can help bring in new supplemental revenue sources for our future. So for budget preparation and just continued maintenance and understanding of what's happening with our main revenue streams, we also work with another division of HDL, which assists us in making sure that we're properly analyzing and forecasting our property tax revenues. So for 2021 fiscal year, we've continued to apply that 22% assessors-applied CPI for our properties. We're estimating a change in the assessed value due to transfer ownership of around $11 million. We know that there's going to be a slower property RE capture, and all in all, there's just a continued change in the positive of around 2% for property taxes. And as it pertains to COVID-19, we don't really see any significant effects currently to property taxes due to this economic downturn. As it wasn't really related to the real estate industry, we really can't correlate it to the recession. However, if this is a longer-lasting downturn which leads to significant defaults, this could be something that could concern us for future fiscal years 21, 22. So for sales tax, I'm sure you've heard enough from me, so I'm going to turn it over to Ken so he can share some of his experiences to why we're seeing those projections that Councilmember Lamont brought up as they're presented in our budget.
I'm glad that Angela, you pointed out there's some detail back, I think it's on packet page 43 where the general fund revenues are shown. And it might be helpful, earlier you saw the estimates for the current 1920 year at just a little over $4 million, but I think it's helpful to put that in context that your year collections for fiscal year 1819 were $5.1 million. And part of the reason we do the work that we do for cities like Cattati is to try to get into the data and understand some of the exceptions or nuances that are going on. And one of those is the preceding year, that $5.1 million actually included $162,000 of late money that was owed in the preceding year due to some payment timing issues, and it really occurred statewide as the state, the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration flipped on a new computer system. But even if I were to take that out of the $5.1 million, it's still a pretty sizable drop-off when you combine your sales tax and what we call your transaction tax, your local measure. So that's still a fairly sizable decline, and, and as noted on the slide, it's kind of occurring across those first three industry groups, which are the major portion of your tax base. So not having auto dealerships and other things, you don't see that really materialize here, and so there's a little bit of a different result. It's not quite as dramatic a fall in 1920, and I think frankly shows a little bit of a rebound going into 2021 with a couple of things included in that assessment or forecast. You'll see here in this COVID-19 and tax payment program, I could spend a lot of time, and I won't, kind of describing the executive orders that the governor put into place at the end of March, but essentially, they're allowing taxpayers, that I would characterize in the medium and small-size category, to take advantage of two programs. One would, one would stay within the current fiscal year, so it really doesn't affect your budget, but it has to do with a 90-day deferral, where taxes owed in March, and that will be made up by June by the end of your fiscal year. The second that's more significant is a 12-month deferral program. So taxpayers that have a liability of $50,000 or, or less are allowed to enroll in a program with the state, essentially not pay what they would owe in the first or second quarter if it's within that $50,000 parameter, and amortize that or pay it off in 12 installments starting in August of this year and running through July of 2021. So what that does in the budget in terms of timing, and I believe Demon and Angela have accounted for this in the numbers that you see, is shifting over a couple of hundred thousand dollars, about, maybe it's about a quarter million dollars out of the current year, which also contributes to the negative comparison of 1920 back to 1819, and then building that back as though it's been paid in the following fiscal year. And then lastly, I'll just say, and again, I'll be glad to answer your questions, I don't know if you're all familiar with the Wayfair decision, but essentially, the Supreme Court made a ruling in 2018 that required businesses, they used to have to have a physical nexus in California in order for taxes to be paid by out-of-state retailers. That decision was basically brought into the 21st century, and so now we That decision was basically brought into the 21st century, and so now we have virtual presence, meaning if you're online or anything, necessitates collection and remittance of tax into California, which includes what trickles down to Kattati. And so that new law took effect in California in April of 2019. And so there's been money getting added into the system over the last three quarters of data that we've seen. And we anticipate there's still some implementation phases for the first three quarters of 2020. So that is built into your sales tax forecast, along with a continuing shift in online behavior, probably accelerated to some extent by what's happening with the COVID-19 crisis. But when you add all that up, what comes to you through what's called the county pools is increasing and it's helping to negate some of the expected losses from your local retailers. So I think I'll just stop there.
Thank you, Ken. So I think just to add on to what you said, as well as I think reiterate exactly what you said previously, is that we also have a different industry group for our city that make up our sales tax compared to our neighbors and the counties and then the state industry groups as well, how it's broken out. And we do have a higher concentration in that building and construction, as well as fuel and food and drug and that county pool. So having that bigger percentage weighted on those other industries that are not as heavily impacted by, they're still impacted in different ways, but not as impacted by the COVID-19 emergency has been something that also plays into these sales tax projections and how they're not as dire as you might see playing out in other local cities, their budget study sessions. So I just want to reiterate that, that we do have a little bit different mix that plays into this. So the rest of our sales tax or revenue sources for the city is we have the other taxes, primarily made up of that cannabis business tax. This is continued operations, even during this emergency. We have received the Q1 taxes for 2020 and are not seeing a significant decline happening this year or even into next year. But we did still keep it rather conservative. We're not estimating on any new business coming in or anything of that nature. So we're keeping it as a conservative estimate of just an increase of around $32,000 for the year. License permits and franchises, we're not expecting any change except for a possible small decline in business license taxes as maybe payments get pushed out or businesses run into some hardship and decide not to renew their license or we maybe lose their business here in Kattati. And again, this is something that we always just conservatively estimate. Rents, we're going to continue with our contracts and agreements as we have them in. However, we are expecting that Civic Center room rentals, which the increase is more and more of our public in our community. We're coming to use our rooms in the Kattati Room for their special events. We do have a significant decline for those, but we anticipate them coming back up as we continue to advertise them in the future for future events after the shelter in place. Next are other agencies. So we still continue to have the Public Safety Contract Services with SSU. And as discussed earlier, the significant change there was really the cash flow change. So we had the additional revenues received in 1819, so they were not received in 1920. And that's going to compare to our contracted amount that we already have scheduled for the $185,000 for the next fiscal year. Our service charges for community development and public works, we're just estimating them based on our existing development project at Cussing Ranch. We're not assuming any other significant inflows of resources from those service charges. For the police charges, we're estimating a decline in revenues. And this is due to the police is really focusing currently on non-punitive community assistance instead of emergency punitive traffic violations or those such items. So we're going to, again, keep those really conservative and assume that we're going to decrease those charges. The other revenues are primarily made up of recreation class revenue, which is on the decline. We have a shelter in place happening. As well as the administrative services, we did get a reimbursement of approximately $26,000 due to our services for the South Sonoma Business Park refunding that we did at the beginning of this fiscal year. So with that, I want to take another brief pause, touch base with Council. Councilmember Lamman, make sure that we address your questions, concerns you had about the general fund revenues at this point in time.
Very good. Thank you, Angela.
All right, and I'm not seeing any other hands up, and no additional members of the public. And just as a point of information, I did my same experiment tonight, and I just logged into Zoom and then entered the meeting ID and the password. So hopefully there's nobody out there who was not able to attend since I was able to make it work. All right, so thank you, and back to Angela.
All right, thank you, Mayor Somon. At this point, Ken, if you want to, I'm going to let you go. We're going to dive into expenditures, both for the general fund as well as going farther into special revenue funds and capital projects. So for our operating outflows and expenditures, you'll see the detailed workbooks on Packet Pages 48 to 59. And you'll see that compared to our adopted budget, we are estimating an increase of around 11%. But this is all due to like factors across all departments. The only role variable is our FTE allocations for personnel that might be identified for each department. And so if you'll, let me jam ahead. I'm going to go ahead and just dive into what the key changes were that got built into our operating expenditure changes for this fiscal year. During our budget study or our budget development process, each department goes through their individual budget and identifies what expenditures are necessary and what's required. Additionally, admin services with the assistance of City Manager's Office as well, we go through the detailed evaluations of the most significant portion of the budget outside of capital expenditures, which was really the personnel services. So each department had going through their budget, they go through their individual line items, repairs and maintenance, additional costs for supplies, as well as all or any of their contract services. Evaluating those contract services, making sure they're still continuing and/or if they should be discontinued, so they're no longer encumbered in our general fund balance as of the end of the fiscal year. So for those contract services, consistent with our previous fiscal years, we use a cost allocation method. Were there any indirect contract services, such as auditing fees, janitorial costs, consultant services like HDL, who provide us an evaluation of a revenue source that is applied to all general fund departments? Those costs are allocated based on an FTE. An FTE is how much of a person's basis is used in each department. And so each department will have their own FTE and how they're allocated based on the number of personnel that are in said department. So myself, I am both functioning as the admin services director, but I also work on water and sewer, as well as successor agency. And so my FTE is allocated to each one of those departments. And we use that combined FTE for every individual to create the FTE allocation for those contract services. So other ways that we have identified expenditures and how expenditures have changed since the last fiscal year is we've included those changes that were already negotiated in our MOUs. So we're expecting everything to continue per normal for our salaries and benefits. All departments are budgeted at a full staff, as mentioned before, which means that they're fully staffed for the full fiscal year. We are continuing that lump sum payment to PERS unfunded liability in the amount of $825,000 for the next fiscal year. Significant expenses that were identified. In addition to that is the election expense for November. So that is found within the other expenses within the City Manager's Department. So if you're wondering what's going on with the other expenses, this is really a fixed expense every four years, or two years, for that election expense. And it is more significant this year with the presidential election. And then the new code compliance department. So we did add a new department this year for code compliance, which previously was included underneath community development. If we jump back again, just previously. So that's really what plays out into these different adjustments for the different departments over the fiscal year. So you'll note that while it appears to be significant adjustments for every department by the different pieces, it really is down to the allocation of contract services, the contract service increases, there's MOU adjustments, which include the significant adjustments for insurance, which was a significant change for our bottom line, as well as those one-off expenses, which the only one really identified for this year was the election expense. All other additional projects or expenses that were above and beyond where we were hoping to be this year were systematically gone through and identified as whether they were needed or not and were pretty much pulled out of the budget at this point in time outside of the projects that were already included in the prior year. So I don't know if we want to stop at this point in time and see if we want to delve into any specific expenses or expense line items or departments or anything you have questions about on that front.
Well, I'll open it up to the council. Is there anybody with any questions about a specific account or... I'm not seeing any hands, Angela, so I think you must be covering everything we're asking or wondering about. So, thank you.
Okay, so then just briefly, transfers in, transfers out. Transfers in primarily come from the Public Safety Fund. So these are transfers that are coming in from that special revenue fund and cover public safety expenses. And then the other funds from the 1920 fiscal year are related again to that South Sonoma Business Park Fund being eliminated and refunded. There was additional general fund revenues that came back into the general fund from that related to the fund balance that was there. So that was besides the previous amount that was a reimbursement to the general fund. This is additional monies back into it due to that refunding. Outside of that, another significant change is due to that capital projects decrease. So we're again decreasing it in 1920 compared to what we had budgeted by approximately $1 million, as well as in the 2021, we're reducing overall projects by that $2 million for postponing, excuse me, postponing those projects. Then next, I'm just going to jump into special revenues, which you'll find at Packet Page 16 to 78. So these are really that special group of accounts that are for restricted use. So we have to ensure that we're using these revenue sources for their earmarked uses only. So special revenues of these types can be used to account for the proceeds of specific revenue sources that are legally restricted or restricted by city council. So these special revenue funds are ran by different departments. So community development has the Inlet Inclusion, housing, bed tax, linkage, special funds, public works, assist with the traffic mitigation fees, park and loo. So we each have different special revenue funds that we help manage and maintain to make sure that we're using it in the appropriate manner that it was set up for. So in those Packet Pages, you'll see the detailed explanation of what the revenue inflows and outflows are. The significant changes for the estimated 2021 budget year is that gas tax is expected to decline due to the shelter in order, due to reduced gas consumption through the 2020, 21 year. Additionally, the MTC streets is expected to decrease due to this emergency and its related impacts from sales tax decreases. The traffic mitigation fund and park and loo have been adjusted due to the timing of our expected projects and the project postponements. The new fund for South Sonoma Business Park, we did that refunding early this year. So we closed out that old fund and we started a new one. Inclusionary housing includes to schedule a payment for the intergovernmental loan from sewer and operating fund. And the CVBG includes expected contributions from the completion of the current phase of school street pathway project, which we'll talk about when we talk about our capital projects. So really, that's the only presentation I have on the special revenue funds. If you have any questions, concerns on those.
I'm not seeing any hands up, so.
Seeing your hands up. Capital projects, this is what everyone's waiting to talk about. So here's a summary of our accomplishments and what we're going to focus on in the next fiscal year. So our accomplishments is that we're going to invest approximately $3.6 million in capital projects. We're going to complete over $3.3 million in streets improvements and receive over $675,000 in grants. We're investing quite a bit in parks, and we're going to continue to invest in the improvements in the Floody Ranch. For 2021, we are going to postpone those projects as Damian laid out. We will continue to evaluate them for opportunities where we might get a better bid price based on the production of capital projects that are happening in our neighboring cities. But for the meantime, we are only programming certain projects that are already partially grant funded for our investments in city safety or emergency preparedness projects, because those are going to be our focus, our immediate focus. So our streets capital projects includes the 1920 streets construction improvement projects. We completed the L section and Benson paving. We also did some traffic safety improvements, including the signal upgrade at Old Road Highway in Valparaiso. And we're going to do the reflective backs on the signals. So these are all budgeted, so this is now a budgeted item of that $78,550 for the next fiscal year. For our building capital projects, we have the City Hall complex refurbishments, which we're going to get moving on. It involves a rehab of the various City Hall complex buildings, including the community center re-roof, as well as other projects around City Hall. And this is budgeted to be around $350,000. And we're also going to move forward with a Civic Center Generator project, which is our evaluation of the electrical needs of both of the Civic Center and the Police Department and the possible rewiring of the PD unit in order to service the City Hall and the rest of Civic Center and move the generator that's there at Civic Center over to the courtyard. So this is all kind of future looking projects to avoid any situations we have with the PSPS. Again, we want to make sure we're not just stuck with our heads in the ground thinking about the COVID emergency and not remembering our recent past with the PSPS and fire events. So we want to make sure we're continuing to plan. So we want to make sure we're continuing to plan for the future. Next, our street capital projects. We're going to continue to fund that wayfinding bicycle and pedestrian signage project for an additional budget fund of a hundred and fifty one thousand dollars. This is again partially grant funded, so we want to make sure we're using the rest of those grant matching funds and making sure we're providing the best city bicycle and pedestrian routes for amenities as people continue to be able to go out and use their bicycles and walk around our city even during this shelter in place order. We're also going to continue the School Street Pathway, as described previously. Again, another CDBG grant funded project that will help along the West School Street Last but not least is another grant, partially grant funded project, which is the Khatari Park, which was previously a part of our Parks Improvement Projects, but this is just a stage replacement of the aging aged equipment at Khatari Park, which is budgeted at just over two hundred thousand dollars. So in conclusion, these budgets are all balanced, and we're trying to maintain the most prudent and effective budget means possible. We're going to continue to monitor our operating revenues and report back to you on changes and make sure that we're ensuring there's sufficient fund balance and cash flows for continued operations. We're going to maintain those operating reserve requirements for the general fund, and we're going to continue to update any significant budgetary changes prior to the budget adoption next month. And we're going to just continue to exercise prudence and integrity with the management of public funds and provide transparency and accountability on all of its uses. That's it in a nutshell. I'd like to take any comments, feedback, areas we'd like to see changes or before it comes back to you next month.
Okay, I see Councilmember Harvey has her hand up. Go ahead, Councilmember Harvey.
Yes, I would like to thank Angela. She spent quite a lot of time with me this afternoon. I had lots of questions, a lot of the comments that were added in her presentation had to do with some of the questions I had. I appreciate you modifying your presentation to include those, and I appreciate the time that you spent with me to answer my questions. And I support all of the effort that you put into this and appreciate, in addition, the consultant adding to the outlook that we have, because that was one of my main concerns is it didn't logically make sense to me what I was seeing, and I appreciate the novel difference that we have here in Khatari and how that doesn't seem obvious, but when you look at the details, it makes a lot more sense. So thank you to Angela for that.
Yes, definitely. And I see Councilmember Delosso, you've got your hand up as well.
Yes, I just put it down, and I was getting, my arm was tired. Yeah, I want to thank you, Mayor Skilman, for the opportunity here. So again, I too want to echo the words of my colleague and thank Angela and Ken and every other staff person at City Hall who had a hand in putting all of this together. I will say that this was not the brightest scenario that we've seen in recent budgets. However, in my opinion, it's significantly better than what I had anticipated. And it's not that there aren't challenges. It could mean that there is some projects that will have to get pushed out. However, knowing that, you know, we are going to get bids for projects and they will be sort of on a standby if we know the money is there, I think is a very hopeful thing. So all in all, and you know, the mix of businesses, I mean, it shows that, you know, there's been a lot of work in certainly in the last ten, twelve years in making improvements to either attract businesses or keep businesses here in town. And since the mid nineties, when I've been on the council, I've been saying that, you know, we really need to try to focus on businesses that we know will help other businesses in the county, and I think we have some of those here certainly, and it kind of makes for their longevity. So just kudos to everybody involved in putting this budget together, and I am, like I say, more significantly pleased than I thought I was going to be. So thank you very much.
Okay, and I see if I smear more. You've got your hand up as well. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. I just want to thank Angela for all the work that's been put into this information, and Ken, thank you very much for the support there. It's such a fluid moment in time, and there are so many questions that we don't know, and being in the position that we are in, having been fiscally conservative and hoping to ride through this in a good way, I think is very positive in light of all the other things that we see all the time. And I realize there's so much work put into that, so thank you for that. My only concern, and of course, we don't know because, and nobody has a crystal ball, but I hope we don't have a second Nike swish. But if, you know, even if we did, I think that we would still weather the storm much better than so many of our neighbors, fortunately. So I appreciate all the effort put into that, and we'll look forward to this going forward and what we're going to have to look at. So with that, I will turn it back to you. Mayor Skilman, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And I've got Councilmember Lamond, I see your hand is up as well. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to thank Angela and Ken too for helping us try and sort a course through what I think we can only call some troubled waters right now in this time. I said it before, I'll say it again, I really appreciate the logic, particularly deferring some of these things and going with things that have partial grant funding. In particular, the wayfinding program makes a lot of sense with where we are in shelter in place right now, walking and biking are things that we need to be able to do, and for those who might be just getting into doing this now and haven't done it before, I think there'll be a lot of value. I also think that the Richardson Lane School Project actually, even though it's a school route project, really will provide a lot of benefit in that way too, because it's a widely used community walking path. And while I have to say I'm personally sorry to see the gateway benches go on the back bench, as it were, I thought we had those teed up for this year. That's logical too. So thanks for the presentation tonight. It was very, very good and very clear.
Okay, and I will avoid any redundancy, but thank you definitely to Angela and all the staff and to Ken as well for putting it together. And it's just, it's nice to see just pulling the purse strings a little bit tighter, being responsible about spending. It's all just a very heartening way through a difficult time to spread things out and keep it, keep things going for as long as possible. So I don't see any other hands up. I don't see any other attendees, so we can go ahead and close this meeting at seven sixteen. Thank you guys so much. Everybody have a safe and good evening.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, everybody. Good night.